Hope everyone had a good weekend. Go ahead, Amit, why don't you start off, please?
Uh, yes, sir. So today I work on like first I work, I work on two things. So first I work on. Uh, I, I Google, uh, business update, like if there will be any change in address, cities, uh, country code or that long. And later, uh, Jay told me that website also, so that check I have added and updated it, there will be any change. I have created full request for it, Jerry approved it just now, so it is on QA. Okay.
Okay, which business update is this? Is this where, um, a business of a chain with multiple locations? Okay, so, uh, did you run a script to correct?
No, 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 luckily we, uh, add inside like inside our profile details, we have a check. In every, uh, every month, we are like checking a business update there. That call itself, I have added a clear credit function to check if there's a difference between their addresses that long, anything.
Does the user have to initiate a search for it to happen, or it just happens that across every company?
So like usually whenever click there, like it's a, whenever click, it will be do that.
Okay, and this only in QA at the moment?
Yes.
Okay, so the one I had sent initially probably is not corrected yet. And the one that I started saw, I think it was either a pizza place or, uh.
You said, sent me? No, I did not get your message from you, John.
I think I put it in development. Um, that's what started the conversation.
Okay, so like it will cha- check also that one, but like for now, if you already click in, then it will check on the next.
You need a review on the PR?
He said he already approved it.
Okay.
Again, thing like on the weekend, uh, Todd sent me a message. So whenever he was sharing SoundCloud on the message, it was saying, showing zero attachment.
Yep.
So I checked about it and found it, we have not handled, no, unlike, uh, those things for the SoundCloud. This is a new ma- new attribute added to the message, right? So inside multimedia, so we have not handled it, so I work on it today and handle it also. So I have one question here, like I created a full request, it is merge like how it should so, like one song posted or like, let me say machine. So earlier now, unlike that day, hey, Todd. So like, uh, Saturday for you, so he told me like, I changed this notification, I made posted a song link, okay? So later, like Todd told me, if you can change it to. Uh, uh, one song uploaded, so I change it to one song uploaded now.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the proper verbiage is you want there, John.
Can you show me again?
So this is the like, uh, when I work on it, I change it to, uh, uh, I made posted a song link. Later Todd told me to change it to, I mean, instead of like send a name is already here, it's in the T D, I made posted a song link, it should say. Once, uh, one song uploaded. He told me.
We reset the user's name, John, again, in the, in the body of that message, it says Amit, Amit's name.
I mean, that's a little bit more clear, I think, he shared the song link, because if he upload a song, I don't know if that means. Only he can get the song?
I see, I see.
Yeah, he said, Amit, I can barely read that. What does it say? Amit posted a song link, is that what's said? How about shared?
Do you, John, do we want to use the word link? Because we don't really offer links, the song is just there.
I can't copy it?
I don't know that you can, can we?
If you long press it?
Great question. I think I did, I think I did try that before, and I think I wasn't able to.
The law to copy or not, and checking some message.
I mean, it could say Amit shared a song with you. Yeah, that, that's clear to me, that I could listen to it, and even if it's a group chat, it's still shared with you. You know, whoever's reading it is you. So, yeah, let's change it to Amit shared a song with you.
Okay, yeah, I will change sender name, share a song link, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I will change it.
And then if you smut, long press it and share it, maybe we could talk to you smell about that today.
No, we are not able to copy, when I click in long press, it is only reactions there.
Okay.
Okay. And third thing, I want to talk with Jerry, Jerry, uh, like, uh, there is a duplicate code like I see in your comment. So can we, can I factor it to make it a functional way and reduce the duplicate code? If you will allow me, I will do that.
Yeah, I, I was kind of asking that.
So, okay, so like whatever it will duplicate code, now I will create it into function, I will call it there, so I will work on it tomorrow, this message effecting.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jerry, why don't you go ahead with your update?
Yeah, we are, we're getting close to our little map magic, I'll, um. I'll display the logic and it's a lot of, the logic under grabbing the visits didn't change. But there's logic, a big logic change in the notifications.
Are you talking about like, location based?
Um, yeah, we're talking about our notifications here.
Okay.
So, the logic in getting the visits, that didn't change. Uh, like, kind of how I indicated, but there is a lot of logic that we're changing now as far as sending the actual notifications. And I'm gonna talk over that really quickly, just kind of, while you understand, it's kind of taking long, I hope to have, I hope to get this tested today. Um, because we get our, we get our visits first, that's using the logic that, that you and I went over. I sent you some examples this weekend, sounds like we're checking out like, pretty solid. Checks out with kind of my visits over the past couple of weeks as well. So we get these visits, and by our logic, we're like, okay, we grab from the database, we get anything within twenty-five meters. And if it's in our database or not, if it's in our database, then we have to see if there are. Uh, if, if it's only one place within twenty-five meters. There is multiple places within twenty-five meters, then we do not send a notification, correct?
Right.
Okay, we do that, and then if we do not get a place within twenty-five meters, then we go to Google. We go to Google and we say, give me everything within twenty-five meters. And we're, we're taking out gas stations, we're taking out fast food restaurants. We're taking out car rentals, and I think there might be another notification that we, uh, I have it in my notes. Or maybe, uh, no, no, I think he said, yeah, add EV chargers back, yeah.
And what was the, uh, rule of if it's twenty meters or less, what do we do? I forget what we talked about.
Uh, within, uh, we're fetching from Google, right? Like, the, the idea is that we want to be sure about it, so if we get multiple results within twenty meters. We're not sending the notification. Because we're not really too sure about it.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so it was, um, it had to do with our database.
Oh, yeah, with our database, we check, i- it's similar logic, we just use Google to back it up. But with our, our database, our first line to check is we check our database to see if we have a business within, uh, twenty meters.
That's what it is, okay, and if it's not, then we look, or, um. Yeah, I guess that's, that is what it is.
If we don't have any, we go to Google, if we have more than three, we discard it.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
And then we go to Google, uh, we check forum. And then, now here's where kind of the extra logic has to go into place, because now we're hitting Google in some instances. And then we have to determine if we kind of throw out everything, if there's multiple locations. But then if we find a location and there's only one location, what we have to do is we have to add that place in our database. I mean, we have it, it's cool, it's not going to cost us any extra API credit since we have it already. So we're going to take that place that we found and throw it in a database, and the reason we need to do that is so when we send them the push notification. That deep link, everything's already preloaded in. And then what we have to do is if we have a location that we're going to notify them for. We have to check our database and we have to see if they've been notified. Um, now if they have a place ID, we have to check and see if they've been notified for that place. Within the past twelve hours, so we don't spam them with notifications. So we have to do the check on this outer level here, rather than the database query. So then we do the checks to make sure we're just not spamming over the same place multiple times, and then we, the same logic of, um, do not send. Are, are we going to keep the logic, do not send more than twice ever?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're going to put that logic in here, and then if it all checks all these passes, then we send a notification.
And you had, you had it running slightly watered down from this over the last few days as well, right? Because we expanded it to a larger cohort?
Yeah.
How'd that do? I knew I'd like to know if there were. Interactions that resulted in a favorite from the notification.
I mean, yeah, we got, we got some, we got. Yeah, we got a good bit.
Um, only resulting in a favorite.
Now here's the fun part.
And then when we're done here, send me a few samples of like who they were and where they were, and I want to see if they like.
I think we got one, who's this? Looks like one of them resulted in a favorite.
And all, those all actual notifications, or they were just hits, and we maybe didn't send notification?
That is, that is also, that's also a possibility. But this is just the ones that it would have sent, but it not, doesn't reflect the ones that were actually confirmed delivered through one signal, that's another list.
So it's going to be less than that, we're actually.
Correct, and this was Aliana and.
And what is she favorite?
Let's see, please, first I key. Nine hundred K Street.
Okay, cool.
So we got, we got one, but yeah, I'll have to like compare that against one signal to find out how many of them actually sent. And again, it's, it's a very diluted version, um, whenever I, I ran the, the test for you, John. I ran it using the new logic of like, we have to check Google, because some of those places are not in our database, like the car wash, for example.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, so far, so good then, um, what are you going to do next with this?
Uh, well, once we get it going, we're going to test it in QA, and what I'll do is I can run, I can run, do some dry runs. Using the data, like for people, for certain, we can, if we are certain people, we know, we. Know their visits, we can validate it against their data, I know we validated against me, validated against you, we'll add some more people to. Put into the validation pool. And then, we can switch it over and we could run it with the same little cohort that we're running it with. And we'll, uh, we'll see how that performs.
Okay.
And, yep, and I don't think this is going to take all day today, it's going to take a little time, but after that. Uh, what I need to do is a couple of things for Todd, including updating the admin, so you can generate invite links into a topic. For an event, which are kind of the same thing, and also Todd wants a follow-up report that he wants sent. I, I don't know, we could do like every day or something that has the people that are sent SMSs. By our partnering nightclubs and seeing how those perform, if we get, uh, conversions out of them.
Good, good, um, anything else?
Uh, no, thank God, save here.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, I mean, why don't you go ahead? I mean, can you hear me? All right, we'll wait for me, uh, it's mail, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, hey, um. So yeah, yesterday, continued working on, uh, or Friday, continue working on the whole upload, um. Situation and, um. I guess here, let me kind of show you where I am, um. So things are getting a. I'm almost there, just trying to a few hitups, basically. The first thing I worked on was the message fail, as we saw on, um. On Thursday, or, yeah. And so Friday, I continued working on now the, um. And so here, I was just testing a thing for Todd, with the emojis, but I can, I, I worked on the, the, the cache. Order when you upload, so. For example, if you notice, if we have like a, like for example, this, this right here, I want to see, or like, yeah, this is an example I do. So this is a video, right? So if I'm uploading a video, and as that's uploading, I upload a, let's say, a image. And that hasn't finished yet. Um, and then I upload a, or I send like a text emoji, right? So these three are, the video is still uploading, and then I added these two. So now, after the video is done uploading, what's going to happen is, it's gonna replace the optimistic response. Which, which, which is what we, uh, we first see, with the actual video. But that cache update removes all the other opti- all the other optimistic responses, which is these two. Because these two are so queued, they haven't been sent yet, and they all shared the same basically key, which was negative one, indicating it's, uh, an optimistic response. And then so these two would get removed, so you'd see the video. And then these two get removed, and then you just see like the loader for the image going, but you don't see the actual image here.
Okay.
Um, and, yeah, so basically, my first challenge was getting them to stay, and then after I got them to stay, what, what, what would happen is. This video once it uploads, it goes at the bottom, so now they're out of order, and then after these two finish uploading, then they go back under the video, so they're back in order. Um, so that's the second challenge I had to face, but fixing the second challenge, um. It was contradicting with the fail message and where it was holding its place, because that also gets added to cache.
We don't want it to hold its place anyway, right, and we decided it would go to the bottom?
Yeah, yeah, but that, I'm talking about the original logic I had. So now, right now, I, after I finally got this to work, the other error message is working, but it's not, it's not really showing right now. So I'm trying to debug it, see why now it's more, doesn't want to show. So I have to find the balance where I have this still working and the error messages handled properly, because they're both. Adding to the cache, basically, uh, and it's getting so little complex. Um, but here, let me kind of, I already done with the air, I'm going to do that with this, and then. I need to get them both to work, and then I'll have the PR up, and I will pause there, in terms of uploading, I won't. Go to, um, the asynchronous upload, which is when you select something, stop playing, yeah, because this stuff is already kind of getting a little complex, so I want to. Pause there, have a build, test it very well, make sure it's stable, make sure it's behaving the way we'd expect it to. And then I'll move on with the other, about asynchronous upload, in the meantime, I can like shift gears to like other things after I obviously. Get this done. Um, but this is kind of how it would look now, so this is a video, we're going to send it, and now, as that sends, we're going to send another image. So you can see the video is still sending, now we're sending the other image, I'm looking to send like the letter A, for example. So that, that would give us, um, you can see now you have three things that are queued, I'm just finding keyboard. So now, this is, I assume this finish up, when this finishes uploading the video. Um, it's going to blink, but it's not going to go at the end, and it's not going to hide these, which was happening at the, at the beginning. Or, which is happening right now in production, so you know, it stayed in position. Um, and now you can see that it's uploading the image, and it stayed in place, and then it sent the text, so everything.
Where's the, um, play button? I don't see it on that.
Oh, it's, it's right here. It's, it's just because the.
Oh, yeah, I barely can see that.
Yeah, it's like, because like the color, the sh- the color of the shade is close to the sky.
Yeah, I think the gray should be darker.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we can, we need to, we can switch the icon for a different one.
And how come the video thumbnail is smaller than the photo of them, or is it not? Maybe it's not, it's, the video looks smaller, the thumbnail.
It's just because the video is a picture of chat, so that, that. Can get confusing, but, um. Um, but yeah, the, but yeah, basically, I guess what I'm talking about here is the, the order state. At, as it upload, as it uploaded, well, it was even worse than this, like right now in production. This is exactly what happens, if, if you're uploading a video, then you send the image, or image is faster than the video, it would actually go ahead and send before the video. So the, the screen would blink, you would see the image, the video is gone, the text is gone, and then after a while, you'd see the text gets sent. Well, actually, I take that back, the first thing will happen was the text will get sent, and then the image would probably beat the video, so then the. Image would get sent, and then you would see the video at the end, and the cache would not reflect any of that accurately. It would just be basically blank, or you just see the letter A. So now they're, not only do they hold their place in cache, but they're actually, this waits for this to finish, so then it can start on the image so that. It doesn't send this before the video, because the video was uploaded first. So it also preserves the order, so like, right now, there, there was a whole bunch of problems that I, you know, sorting out with the whole cache and upload. But yeah, right now, I just need to get that fail message to show again, and then, yeah, I think I'll have this PR up, because it's, it's getting pretty big. Uh, but yeah, other than that, I'm just working on, um. Todd sent me the, basically, it looks like when we send two emojis, like, i- i- they, i- it stacks them up on Android. Instead of having them next to each other. Uh, so. I'm also, I'm working on that, as I'm working on this, that's right here, so I'm still doing some tests, but, um, it looked like it. It only happened with two emojis, which is weird, so, um. And I'm getting weird behavior right now, because it looks like. On this phone, it's working, but on a different iOS version. Or, sorry, different Android version, it's not, so, this is, um, I don't know what Android this, or Android version this is. But it's, you viewing it properly. But on, on a different Android, which is, I'm, it's on a physical one that I have running right now, it's showing, for example, these two thumbs up. Under each other, not next to each other, and it would only do that for two emojis. Uh, and. It looks like it might be. Related to the Android version. Because, um, I mean, this was never a problem, and that component hasn't been tested for months. I mean, yeah, for a very long time, actually, probably a year now, and I'm talking about the send and the receive component. Um, and if Todd, you're here, can you confirm only if you send two emojis that would do that, right? Three would work, and well, one, it can't stack one, because it's one, but three would work, and only two wouldn't, right?
I'll, I'll test, I didn't test more than two.
Yeah, so if you send three, I think it will look fine, or if you send two, it will stack them, and I. I'm starting to think it might be something related to the new Android version, because as you can see here, it's, it's not doing that. Oh, wait, I'm not sharing my screen, sorry, I thought I was sharing it, um.
John, was this happening to you as well? Is that how we, how we picked it up? I think you showed it to me.
So here is my, uh, my Android, and you can see over here, um, it's not doing that, right? But I have the same.
I never saw it do it on iOS.
Uh, it doesn't do it on iOS, it only does it on Android. So this only happens on Android, and I think the newer version of Android.
Okay.
She can probably also confirm if it's happening to her or not, so until if you can send three emojis, then two emojis, and see if any of them stack, please.
Uh, no problem.
Yeah, well, yeah, Todd, you, you're going to send your phone, which we already know is, but I think Shantel can't update, so I want her to also, well. Test it, if she's here.
I'm here, three emojis, then two emojis.
Yeah, see if any of them stack.
Okay.
Um, because, uh, again, as I mentioned, I have a physical phone running right now, which is not displaying, it's showing everything fine. The physical phone is stacking, it has a new, I, it has a new Android on it.
And it should be three identical emojis, right?
No, no, so what's happening is, you see how these are next to each other?
Yes, I know, but they should be identical emojis, or does it matter?
No, it doesn't matter. Uh, well, that's a good question, let me see, actually, I don't think I tested on these two emojis, yeah, no, it doesn't matter what they are. Like over here, you can see that, these two are next to each other, on my physical phone, they're actually, the, uh, they're like the oranges. On top of the watermelon. They're, they're not adjacent. No, so. Yeah, and this is happening on the send and receiver side. So I know, I'm almost ninety percent sure it has something to do with the new Android iOS, because again, over here, as you can see. It's working fine, and this is, the thing, this is the older Android, and it was working fine before. Before time, but only now Todd is noticing, I think after he updated his Android, um, now why it's happening, I'm still not sure. Um, but. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of convinced at this point that it's, it's only on the new Android IO, uh, or operating system. And then I guess Shantel can confirm that now, if she, if Shantel, you, you have you sent?
Yeah, I sent it to your, this mail test, I can.
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter who you sent it to, uh, how, how does it look on your phone right now?
Um, I mean, it does look stacked, I guess.
So, di- did you send two, two emojis?
I did three emojis, then two emojis.
Or on top of each other?
Let me just send it to you, because I don't want to answer incorrectly.
Okay.
According to what you're looking for. Okay, I just slacked it to you.
Yeah, they're right next to each other, so, which is correct.
Okay.
Okay, so Todd, and you're running on which version of Android?
Um, let's see.
Oh, sorry. Version of the app, are you running on?
Oh, sorry. Let me see. Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, okay, is that the newest one? We have, oh, let me see.
Seventy-four is the newest one, that's in QA, right, that's not available to the public?
No.
Okay.
So Todd, you, uh, did you confirm that's only two?
It is only two, now, I'm doing it from two Androids. Both are on version seventy-three from the Google Play Store. Unless my eyes are deceiving me, um. It's stacking on. One phone, but not the other, no matter which way I send it, and I'm not.
Do they have different operating systems?
They might, let me see, one's a Pixel, one's a Samsung Galaxy.
Then they have different operating systems.
Um, and maybe this reveals something else, if, if they're both, well, I guess, let's see what, what Android versions they're on, yeah. And this, it could, it could be Samsung related, because this is a Pixel right here. Which, um, I, but my other one is a Samsung, my physical, and it's showing them stacked. Um, so, yeah, I guess, let me know what, like what version of Android, both of them are running.
They're both, um, hold on, the Pixel's on fif- uh, fifteen. And the Android, and the Samsung is also on fifteen.
So they're the same, hmm, are they fifteen point something, or just fifteen, do you have?
Android fifteen.
Android fifteen, okay, so it looks like it, I could be wrong, it could be. Related to a specific Android on only Samsungs.
Yeah, let me confirm, I have a couple of other Androids that are Samsung twenty-ones. I can maybe just put tests over there, um, I'll be back in a moment.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so I guess that kind of helps narrow down the problem for me, the thing I asked, because I, I. It looks like it's, it could be Samsung only, so that I can save me time with operating system stuff. Um, but yeah, that's, that's, there's that problem, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
What else you have going on?
Um, yeah, that's, that's just, look, pretty much it, I, I just need to get those error messages working. And, um, I need to have that PR up for me to review, and that, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna stop on working on the upload stuff, because I did quite a bit. And we need to test it before I move on with the asynchronous upload. Um, so I can like switch tasks. Um, so I can, like, switch tasks. Until that's fully tested.
Switch tasks to what?
Well, depends, um. I have nothing necessarily pending, so. To work on the member stuff, we were talking about Friday, I don't know if Amin already started on that.
I think Amin is working on that, but did you want us to test, is that what you mean, you're waiting on QA for?
Well, I'm still not done, I, as I mentioned, the message fail handling is, is kind of broken after I fix this. So like, fixing this caused that to break, so I need to get that to work, which I'm hoping I can get done in the next hour or two. Um, and then I need to create a build, for you guys to test what I have so far. And then if that's all good, then I'll start on the asynchronous upload. But between the time that you guys test and me starting on the asynchronous stuff, I can do something in between.
Why not just go to the asynchronous upload?
Or I guess I can create a build, and, well, it's because I wanna, so they're, they're, they're all connected. And before I build off of what I have, I want to make sure it's solid. Because it's, it's, it's tricky, it's, it's very tricky, and like, like, like I fixed this here and broke that, like, you know what I mean? I don't want to be, start working on the asynchronous and bricks other stuff, and there's other problems you guys report to me later, which can just create. A mess, so that's why I want to have, make sure what I have is solid, and then I, I can start building off of it with asynchronous stuff.
Makes sense, okay. Okay, sounds good, then, um. Well, we'll stay in touch on it, anything else you want to add?
No, not at the moment.
Real, real quick, John, uh, it's, it is happening just on the Android phone, or the Samsung, the Pixel that I have, it doesn't happen at all.
Yeah, it looks like Samsung on the new, on the, on Android fifteen is the combination that this, this is occurring. You know, I mean, I'll, I'll look more into it, as I say, I'll see what's up there, but, yeah, I guess that kind of helps, um. Narrow down the problem, but at the same time, it's, looks like it's Android or Samsung specific, which also makes it more tricky to fix, it could be on the native level, so we'll see.
Okay, sounds good, uh, we'll be, stay in touch on it, thank you. Okay, is Amin here? Hey, Amin, let's get your update, please.
Um, yeah, Friday, um, worked on, like, well, finished working on the, uh. Handling the Android work that we did for iOS, so now, we, so, to know which, um. Like, which, which link or custom page, uh, lead to an install, so we can, uh. Join that user later on, after the onboarding for that group. Yeah, I did all the work for Android, did, um, it's, the PR is merged, like, we did a build of it, um. With Android, like, we don't have to do any, um, upfront, um. Any upfront, like, um, stuff in, in their dashboard, it's just the link, if the link, it's will, like. The Google Play link, it's if it's like, um, it has this RAM that I'm looking for, like, everything's gonna work as for iOS. I'm not sure if we. If we're able to this, um, any of those links, um, for the latest build with the Android. But yeah, that's, that's done, also, like, I fixed, uh, like, an issue, uh, with a universal link for the check-in. So that universal link, it should, like, take a user to the screen where you're gonna check into that place. But it was like breaking, it was, um, causing a white screen, so I fixed that on Friday too, and it was like, um, merged in the latest build. Uh, yeah, like, I went to work on the, um, creating group, um, without sending a message. Uh, working on DUI, um, let me, um, share my screen. So, yes, from here, in the chat, and if the user press on the group, now it's gonna be this screen. Um, that looks like that, uh, I had it in a model, because like, the navigate, so this is a model. So the navigation from a model to a normal screen, it's not gonna be looking that good. So, I just figured to, to have this, this one as a model as well, and, yeah, so, um. Yeah, this, this, this part, like, a user can add the image or not, I'm, I'm still working on the backend on it, but this is the, um. The progress that I made on Friday on this screen, regarding this screen. Uh, yeah, it has the name, members, yeah, let me showcase the members, so. If, like, you do this, example, oh, whatever you selected here, then you do group. It's gonna be here, it's gonna say it's members one. I have a question, uh, I have, I need to share everything, um, so we can see the designs. So, I remember, like, we said, if a user press on members, it will be taken back to here. But like, this here, it's in now, it's in this another screen, so. Like, navigate them to a, so like, this list. Yeah, so when a user press members, it's gonna be like a screen here added, where it's gonna be this list, and. Yeah, this is my question, or how we want to handle it.
Yeah, uh, do we do that, where we go from a modal to another screen, anywhere that you can remember?
I don't remember. But yeah, I, I was just, because I don't know, like, who I'm talking about, like, we were like, user needs to go back here, but now with the current setup. It's not gonna be, like, a really good user experience to be back here and, and here again, user needs to press group again or something.
Let me think about that a second, if you hit group. Okay, if you hit group currently. In the app, doesn't it take you to that screen on your far left?
Yeah, it just switches it, it's not like taking you to a screen, but like this container here. It will be filled in with this list. You're not being moved, moved out to any other screen. But right now, when you do press now, we're on a different screen, so that list in, in the previous screen, not in here.
I see, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't change screens, it. Wait a minute. Wait, it's behaving differently for me. That's really weird, how did I do that, one second, what am I doing? That's really interesting, I found an edge case, um, let's see. If you type a name, but don't select the name. From plus chat. Let me try it different way. That's so weird, there is an edge case that. I never noticed. Um, do you have an emulator app?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can use that, just give me a second, um. Yeah.
Yeah, if you, um, okay, so plus, press plus group right now. It brings up a list, right, okay, so now, yeah, uh, cancel, or hit done. Yeah, so now you're back to where you were, now type a name. And select the name. And then hit plus group. And then brings the list like you expect, now hit done, uh, or like hit the X on that little red X, yeah, and then hit done, so you're back. To where you were, now type the name, but don't select anyone.
Type the name, don't select.
Yeah, now hit plus group. That's weird. Little different, um, maybe. Yeah, no, that is weird.
Yeah, it is weird, but I think with what we are doing, this won't be a problem.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I'll have to check it again.
Okay, I just wanted to make you aware of it, at least, because you're.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look for it when I'm done, working on this, to see if it's still there, if it's still there, then I'll see, uh, how I can fix it.
Okay, okay, so now I'll get, hit cancel on it, and let's try this again. Okay, and then go to plus chat. And. If we hit. Plus group here now.
Yeah, no, it's gonna be the list.
It stays a modal. Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if it navigated, um, so it stays a modal here. And we would be, in the case you were just showing, we would be on the menu before this. Right, like the behind.
Yeah, you will be.
Yeah, that menu there.
But like, this is another screen, um, I mean, when I was working on it, I was like, should I not, like, take the user to another modal screen? And have everything here, like, it's gonna be covering here, everything.
Right, why, you know, you chose the modal.
Because it, um, it's like the, the expected experience of. Like, of navigation, you know, I like to just have things appear disappear, because like. I do down here, things just appear disappear, it's gonna be the same for here, I mean. I was like, prefer the other one, because it's like the normal way.
But you're right, it is weird, we were saying, like, to go from a modal to transition to a screen.
Yeah, it's gonna be a weird, like, it's, it's like a weird transition.
That would be weird, yeah. I agree, I'm trying to see if we do that anymore, but I don't think we do. Yeah, because I don't see, uh, I don't see any situation where we do that. Um, okay, so. So then. How do you propose us getting here?
Uh, I was like, it's, it's gonna be like, uh, another model with this list, and when the user.
Could it just replace the model, like this one replaced the contents of the model, like, if you hit done?
Like, replace the contents of, of this one?
Yeah, could do that, then again, it's got a colored background, it might be weird. Be a little weird with the colored background, let me see how this one transitioning, if you hit done. So we're on in this modal, you hit plus group. Yeah, it would look really weird with the background disappearing. It, we get away with it here, because it's all white, it's still weird here, but like, not, you can't really tell why it's weird. It would look very weird with the background. So.
Or, or I can, I can, I'm, I'm not really sure about it, but. So, let, let me bring my code here, um. I just have to confirm if it's possible or not, um. If this is gonna be good, so inside the model itself, we're gonna like navigate to a new screen, that's inside the model, so it's gonna be like. The native navigation we do in. So here, we're not gonna take the user to a, any, like, we're not gonna do any new model, but like, this screen is gonna stay here. And the new one, it's gonna like, just like coming in from the left here.
Top of the blue area?
Yeah. So this one will be pushed to the left, as, like a normal stack navigation.
I guess, that might be cool, yeah, I mean, it is a button, little arrow pointing to the right, so. It kind of makes sense, it would come from the right to the left. Can you test it right now?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me look up, uh, React Navigation.
Probably very uncommon.
No, I remember I've seen it somewhere, in some iOS app. Like, you are inside the model, and you have navigating screens going on left or right, inside the.
Interesting.
Yeah, just, um, it looked like when she was pasting an image. Into the chat, it was giving her a white screen. I can't recreate it, but it was something she was able to continuously recreate. And she has an iPhone.
And you shared that in development, right?
I did.
Should have Jerry and Ismail look at that.
That's gonna definitely be front end if it happens when she paste.
I see, okay, so, Ismail, there is a in-between task you could look at, and it's in development with Shantel.
Last video, is that? Was this the last video?
Yeah, I believe it is the last video.
So she paste, so you got a white screen, okay. Yeah, alright, I'll see what's going on there.
And then I, um, never got an answer on Friday. About how to answer the privacy security question. And if we've got encryption in messages.
Yeah, I remember that, and it wasn't, he wasn't asking if we have encryption, it was like, a level, or I don't. Really understand. The nature of the question, like.
How private and secure. As an encryption in the messages chat.
All right, you can tell we encrypt messages in private chats, we don't encrypt messages for public chats. I have a feeling he has some kind of follow-up, but like, whatever, that's the.
It'll, it'll at least get the conversation moved forward. Okay.
Um, well, I mean, doing this, um, Wells, if you're there, why don't you give your update, please?
Yes, sir. So, the trip PRs were approved and merged by Friday, so they should be on the next build. So. The ones regarding the the U when you fix on the chat and gallery spacing fix. Uh, should be merged along with, what was the other one? You see here? Yeah, let's start the convo C area update, so all that should be there. And right now I'm working on our request from both Todd and Shinto. They they both communicated the same issue. Shinto, a couple more things. Regarding the editing on the 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 chat on the group admin. When you go on the group admin screen, uh, the name of the group was cutting off and. The Shinto also requested it to be a little bit more like the. The sigma designs, so having the icons there for the admin group and the the lead chat and. All that stuff, so I'm making sure that it looks as close to design as possible, putting the icons there and. Working on fixing the issue regarding the name code. Uh, the name code I could fix, I'm just getting it to be just like the design cuz there has to be some extra. Putting some areas over there, so I believe we'll be opening API regarding that by today. And besides that, only analytic stuff. That I'm still working on. But on that, it matter nothing, I think we'll show yet. I believe we'll be showing some cool stuff by by tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else you wanna add?
Uh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so yeah, John, um, you can see that.
Hmm, yeah.
The wall stays in and it's based in if like just navigation, the normal one.
Yeah, why does it look, why does the screen look so weird?
Yeah, because I just have as a as a dummy just to test this works. I want uh, I'll I'll work on this more to make it a little bit.
Okay, let me see, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Real time, okay. That's some pretty normal looking.
Yeah, yeah.
And then how would the user get out? Could they swipe left to right?
Uh, we're gonna do a done button here at the top, like the same we have in design done or. Or if just whatever you selected, then you just to swipe left, uh, no, it's uh, oh yeah, everything goes if you just.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, because now this, um. Make a one place, also, yeah. So, if a user do this anywhere.
Yeah.
It's gonna dismiss the whole thing.
That's a problem.
Hmm, yeah.
Can you make it um, frozen at that point? Like you can't swipe down?
I mean, that's the, I I don't know, let me see, uh, it's just a little while like this hits.
But like unfreeze it when they hit save?
Um.
I would hit, I would have a save button.
Yeah, we would do a save button, but like um, to to like um. Freeze it, something like that. The user will think that it's broken cuz it's easy used to.
Probably, but there will be a save, like saving.
Yeah, I know, like, yeah, um, but like, um. A normal user that's used to iOS apps, it will try to do this and nothing happens, it will be like, oh, this app does not work. It's not doing this. Normal thing that every app do, even like we have a save, but like.
Yeah.
The user would not know, but I I guess what we can do right now, since this is possible, so we are inside the model here. So when I use it to a group, we're not taking these to another model, but like just have this one. Be coming here from there too, right?
Hmm. So. Still have the same problem.
Huh?
But then you still have the same problem if they didn't.
Well, like you, it's one model. If a user do this, like he's he's telling like.
That's true, like they'll go back to what what's behind there?
Yeah.
I see what you're saying. Okay, so that, um. How does that, how does that solve our problem on the next screen?
The next, so yeah, well, uh, for the next screen, when I use the do members, like it's just gonna swipe from there to right, like um, things will look normal.
Oh, I see. So the screen before this won't be a modal?
No, this one's gonna be a model, but when a user press group, we're not gonna have in another model.
The plus group will be fullscreen.
No, it's gonna stay, this model is gonna stays and the and this screen.
Will slide in.
Yeah, will slide in.
So it'll be a modal again.
Yeah, it's gonna be a.
Yeah, it's like it is right now. You hit plus group right now? That's a modal.
Yeah, but no, we're gonna change that.
Oh, cuz this is a different modal. I see, I see what you're saying. It's technically a modal on top of a modal right now?
Yes.
And it, but if it slides in from the right to left, it'll be the old, the original modal, not a modal, okay, I see.
So we're kinda gonna preserve what we have right now if you press but group and you have the list.
Okay, but then there will be a modal on top of modal, or no, it'll slide in?
No, it's gonna be only one model, which is this one.
So if you go and hit plus group.
Mm-hmm.
So this won't be a model, this will slide in from the right. Then what happens if I hit members?
It's gonna be like this, exactly like.
Alright, um, but if they swipe down.
Yeah, just wipe down, everything goes, uh, like if if it's like, if you just wipe down, it's gonna be like this.
Yeah.
Cuz they are in one model.
I see. I I don't know that that perfectly solved.
I can like do it and show you how it's gonna be.
Okay.
So yeah, John, this is how it's gonna be.
Okay.
So if this is the chat, um, if you press group, you stay in the same model.
Good.
The screen slide in from the right.
Good.
If you do members, make, yeah, if you go back. And if you go back here, you go back here, and if you do this and you slide, you're gonna dismiss everything cuz you're just one model.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
No, it's gonna be the same because, I mean, unless if we ditch this whole model thing.
Hmm, I think it probably works. Um, so if I go to members and I hit create group. So I have my cancel button here, right, um. Go go to members now. Okay, so this one will need. Like back and done.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do a header for this one, yeah. I know this is like a dummy, just.
Yeah, I'm thinking what they should say, um, it's hey. Yeah, back and done. Save save isn't good because it has confirm before this one. Confirm with save, so this will be back and done, I think.
Okay.
Choices, yeah. And back makes sense, not cancel, because cancel. Kind of seemed like you're cancelling everything. So, yeah, so back and, okay. I I think it'll work good enough. I mean, it's not, it's not perfect, but I think it's, I think it works. So, and if you swipe down, go ahead, you'll go all the way back to your message log?
Yeah.
Okay. Which if I selected fifty-eight people here, would not be great. You see?
Well, it's it's um.
Cuz it takes time, like I'd scroll.
Yeah, I know, but like, um. If you are like an iOS users, you would know like this model, if you just, if you slide it down, you dismiss.
Yeah, true. Yeah, I mean, you could see behind it, and it does have. A done. Button. Done isn't really like, yeah, I guess, I don't know, I guess we're gonna find out.
I'm not sure if like iMessage has anything like this, but I'm sure they're gonna be, because this is the native, um.
Right, we're just doing some weird stuff with like modal sliding on top of modal. So, yeah.
Well, the current iMessage, like I just, if I do just a new message, and I have that plus button, if I press on it. It's gonna be a model on top of that model. And yeah, if, what else?
The other way to do it, and I have seen this on apps, I've seen a modal actually over a modal, so there'd be two. Uh, three.
That was the original, what we did.
It is? What, when did we do that?
Yeah, it was like before.
No, 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 I mean, no, the this model got replaced. The content, I'm talking about another, like, see how there's a gray one in the background?
Yeah.
Yeah, like I'm talking about now, this one would now be in the background and another one on top of it. I've seen that before, and I thought it was a little odd, but it worked.
Well, that one we just had before we do these changes.
Kinda, like it didn't, I don't think it forced this one behind, like in shrunk, right?
Oh, yeah, it says if he dismisses, it's gonna dismiss everything.
Exactly, you could, the way I'm just describing it is like if you had a deck of cards. And at third card stand. Yeah, and you would only slide down the card on top.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me look up that and see if it's.
I've seen that on a big app, I don't remember where.
Yeah.
I saw.
Well, yeah, I'll give you a second.
It would make more sense, really.
Mm-hmm.
It only, it doesn't make sense, the little right chevron arrow, um. Bringing it from the bottom of whatever, um. It's still the user, at least they won't get. I would, it would just be terrible, like if I'm creating a huge group. And I actually dismiss it all, I'd be so frustrated.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, that's all we're talking about. But like, he's saying, this one should be a model as well.
Right, like a third level, not.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we can, we can do that. I wa- I was like, that one was, was suggesting first, you have just another model at the top, and we're like, another model.
Right, it does seem weird, but I have, I don't, you know, I think after looking at the alternative. I think it's quite better.
Yeah.
Um, so what were you gonna say?
Yeah, we can, we can have it as a third model instead of navigation like this.
Yeah, I think that would be better. Okay.
Yeah, um, okay, let me see, so instead of. See, it's gonna be like this. And what we can also do is like, um. As you are selecting, things are being saved, like, we're gonna do a save or done button here. And that's just like to make the user feel he did something, but.
Because why, why else would it be saved?
Like, as the user selects him.
Yeah.
We're gonna be saving this. He's need to really press on a save. If you want to, yeah, you can.
Well, that's why I think you should say done.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Because, yeah, you're not saving it cuz there is a confirm button later.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I would say that. Yeah.
Okay.
But there'll be, this will be a third level that I would, oh, I guess it technically is, but I don't really see the three. Why can't I see, I can't see the original one.
Oh, what do you mean, original one? Like, here is it? Oh, you want like all of them stacked?
Yeah, exactly. I've seen that before.
You've seen like three stacked before, like?
Yeah, I have, yeah.
It should be something custom because like this is the native.
I see. Well, then don't worry about it. If it's not easy to configure. I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it cuz it works, but I have seen it with three.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, but that's fine.
Okay, and for Android, there's no such thing as models, so it's just gonna be the normal navigation for Android.
So all of these will slide from right to left?
Uh, I'm not really sure if it's right to left, but I think it's from the bottom to top. That's the default for Android. I'm not really sure. But it's the default, like, um, for, like, for right now, like you see here, we have a model here for the chat. If you go in Android and you visit the chat, what, what happens? I think it's like from the bottom to top.
Is the bottom to top or is it right to left?
Um, not really sure. I, I don't, I think it's, you know, like, if Chantel here, Todd, you can confirm that very quick.
But.
But it's gonna be whatever we have in right now with the chat here. So whatever is we have in here, it's gonna be. For this model and it's gonna be for this one.
Okay.
What do you want me to check right now?
Yeah, if you like go to compose here from chat.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Like, what's the transition animation like?
Uh. It slides up from the bottom.
Yeah, that's.
And it's full screen at that point?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sure, okay.
And it automatically comes up with the keyboard.
Here?
Yeah, because like the two field is also selected.
Yeah, that is, okay.
My little circle thingy is off.
But that's a good point, though, that you think about. I mean, you'll have to handle the keyboard on the next screen.
Yeah, I mean, let me see how it's gonna be, uh, if I do.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's like, um.
We dismiss there, but we're, yeah.
Do we want it to stay there?
No.
So, yeah, it's gonna be dismissed and, um.
On Android, you think on Android too?
Yeah, will be dismissed too. Like, that's automatically a thing when our new screen.
It's always, yeah, dismissed as by default, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, uh.
Okay, since this is out of the way, so I'll just like, um. Using our more finishing the UI as the backend will be ready, so we need a new muta- mutation. Just wanna create group is pressed, we call that mutation and, uh, yeah.
Okay, do, do you need to tell Jerry about that?
I think it's easier wherever we talked about it Friday, right, Jay?
Okay, so we have all the parameters we need to call this mutation now?
Oh, yeah, it's, um, it's gonna be, yeah, the image, name, members, and, uh. Whether there is a welcome message.
A welcome message and also make public.
I think this is, it has something submission approval, so this is gonna be a separate.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know how.
Stations, one for creating and another for submitting for public. Or, or I could probably just, um, it'd be, I'm, I plan on using that creator update group for group message.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I think that would be fine here.
Okay, well, yeah.
Why not, when you create it, submit it for, um, public? If you have a welcome message and all the, you know, the criteria.
I think these are two different things, so this, like, making the group public, it's. It has nothing to do with creating your, but so this is my question, why if you feel like you use it, went and do submit for approval? But right now, there is no group, like, the user is, as it dies, it's gonna do cancel.
So. I guess my original question is how? Why do we not make it public during the process of creating the group? Cuz that's what it looks like on the screen, right?
Yeah, John, um, yeah, I, I don't have an answer.
What was the question, Jerry? So it sounds like that we're gonna create group first and separately submit it for approval?
Um.
Approval for public? Was like a separate process after it's created? Yes, like we do now, I can create a group right now, but it's not public. My suggestion is, is why not, uh, from this interface? Let's say where it says make your community public. Um. What I've seen on other platforms is it's like, it's called visibility and visibility would say like private. And then you click it and then it brings you to the screen. And then it's like visibility, private or public, and then when you hit it public, it's like, yeah, you're gonna need. You need a photo, you need a welcome message, but effectively while they're creating the group. When they submit to create, they could submit it for public approval as well. If they have all the, the, the necessary things, rather than having to go back after creating the group and resubmit. I think, I'm confused cuz I think you described our flow here, but. So this is a thing that they're gonna be able to submit to make public while they're creating. Only, yeah, only the toggle or, uh, not, not the toggle, but the one above the toggle. Your community public brings you over. So like, basically, it's, to me, this isn't any different than how the app works right now. Where if I create a group, I have to ask you for permission to make it public and then you approve it. Right, I'm not saying that we make it public right away, I'm just saying, um. I'm asking if they can submit a request to make it public while creating the group. Isn't that what you see here?
Hmm.
The submit for approval has a back button on the screen?
Yeah.
And also it means hiding one thing. I mean, can you move your emulator over? There is another thing there, that's what you will see when you hit submit. My concern here is there is no toggle. What if I accidentally submit for approval? If I ac- there, is there a way to? Yeah, there's a screen, um, I think maybe below this screen, uh, in Figma, where you can change the status.
Um, see.
Somewhere on here. Chantel, we made it so you can. We have a screen for like, if you, if you have a public group to make it not public anymore. I think, what did we decide on that? Like, you have to submit that for approval too? I forget what we decided.
I remember we talked about it. I don't remember what we ended up doing with that.
So we don't, we don't have a screen for once it's public?
To go unpublic, yeah, I.
But what if on this screen, while I'm creating a group as well, what if I accidentally hit submit for approval?
You can, um, like for this accidental, like, you're gonna be here and you're gonna press on this one. Then you're gonna be on this screen. So it's, it's a little bit like.
It's a lot of intention, you know, intensive actions. But are we gonna consider that, what if, what if they changed their mind?
Yeah.
We, we did toggle in a lot of places. I, I, I don't use Facebook groups, but I, I mean. Other platforms where I would create a group or something, I would expect it to have like, like YouTube, for example, YouTube has status. And by default, it's public, public, but then it's like a dropdown, you can do private, unlisted. And. Which we have the menu option here where instead of make your community public.
Yeah.
You'll be private.
Yeah, I think the idea was that was gonna change, it's saying make your community private. But it looks like I don't have the screen for that, so I can do that now.
Okay.
But I have another question, how a user can make the group? Public or not, even before creating it?
Well, they, they don't make it public when creating, they submit a request, so it would.
Yeah, like. By like the request, how you're gonna like identify which group?
It's gonna be like email. So it's, while, if you submit it with the mutation, I'll have the group key. After, after the group is created on the backend. And then I'll see if you pass that flag, and okay, well, the group's created, I can submit the request for approval.
Exactly, but like, I'm.
But not just when it's created. What about after it's created, I go back to this menu? Anytime, we have the group key. Does that sound right to me?
Yeah, if we have the group key, yeah, but like I was just asking. Before having the group coming in, before creating the group, let's say I'm a user, I just like came in here, did a group. They'd make your community public, I'm gonna be having this screen, I'm gonna do submissions for approval. Yeah, I need an image and, uh, and a name, I'm gonna do go back to image and name. And I'm go back again and do submit for approval, but I did cancel. Like, I felt like it was central approval, I did cancel. There's no group there.
Then we don't, we don't submit for approval. See, I believe the submit for approval, that should not trigger a mutation on its own. I believe it should call the creator update group for group message mutation. Which that mutation is pretty much like an up cert. And it's an extra field that we add into that up cert, whether or not we make it public or not.
Yeah, for me, it's, it's all fun and just like, um, what will we discuss on it? Just like how it's gonna be looking like for the user.
Okay, I wanna hear that one more time, but hold on a sec cuz I just realized something. Chantel, on this modal, where it says okay. Uh, there probably should be one other instruction. Before you can submit for approval, you must add. At least, uh, two members. To your group, name your group, add a photo and create your welcome, like, we should have it all cuz.
Okay, at least two members, got it.
Yeah, you shouldn't be able to submit for approval without members.
Okay.
So, um, okay, so. I mean, are you still questioning? Some, some of the UX here, what, what part was, could, could your question?
Yeah, like, just like what mutation I'm gonna be calling and the order, yeah, cuz like, is it gonna be one mutation or two? But Jerry says we just need one.
Yeah, but you were saying a hypothetical scenario, if a user. Um, hit submit for approval at certain point, like what was the, what was your concern?
Yeah, but with that, with Jerry, what's existed, it's not gonna be an issue anymore.
Okay, okay, so you don't have any more questions?
No.
Okay, okay, then I guess it's straightforward and.
So as you know, you, you have everything, um, you need, so, yeah, when you're done with the mutation, give me the name for it, so I'll be calling it. When we create group is.
Yeah, yeah, I have what I need, just one, I guess I'm also kind of asking the same thing as well, that, um. The question is how the, the user flow, I just wanna make sure that if a user mistakenly hits the submit for approval button while creating their group. But they don't want it to be public, if they change their mind, that they can reverse it without having to just start from the beginning. Yeah, well, I mean. It can get reversed later, like they could still create their group and then change it to private. Yes, well, they can, but what about when they're creating the group? But that doesn't hurt anything, they haven't sent any messages yet, so it's like, what difference does it make? You know, like if they accidentally. In the end, in the end, that's, that's how we think of it, but I could also imagine it that somebody's like, no, 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 I want this to be private.
So just, and so, yeah, it, um, it will go again.
I just don't see anything in this interface where they can reverse it. It's basically, they hit public and then there's like no way to go back around. It would be on the menu in the, the middle screen there, where it says make your community private. Yeah. Okay, yeah, as long as, as long as it's gonna toggle between that, I'm cool with it. Yeah. That was just my only suggestion, maybe from UX. Okay, um. Yeah, it probably should say like pending approval also, like. And then me, like in the short window, I mean.
Well, yeah, I, I think right now it's gonna be like more complex for the user. Just like how Jay was suggesting, just like to have a toggle for public, private, and if you want like to, um. To let the user know like that, just like, uh, we can like add, uh. Like an information icon or something that says he is, so it says, it's gonna take the user here, so it says. Uh, for, you're gonna be, you're gonna need to wait for approval for your group to be public and you're gonna need to have this and this and that, but like. The action is just a toggle and all of this is.
Yeah, I don't want to be a toggle because. It takes time to approve it.
Yeah, but we will like have somewhere here to let the user know. That just changing the toggle will not make it public immediately.
Which is what we designed already. Cuz like it does let you know on this screen right here.
Yeah, um, but right now it's like we, we went with, well, if the user wants to reverse it.
It would be the same menu. I, I don't, I'm fine with that. I probably will change the wording on the screen a little bit.
All right.
Um, in fact, I think I took a screenshot, I did, I took a screenshot of this on Friday. Um. I was gonna just change the layout a little bit, like. Like the please allow up to three days for approval, like for instance, that could be in a modal. That after you hit submit for approval and just like, or a toast that happens after, like, we don't need every single. Line on this screen, but I'll, that's minor, I'll, I'll let you know if I have changes to the text on here, but, um. But yeah, I don't, I mean, I think it'll, this'll work fine for any case we're discussing here, just. There's more than one way to do it, but this, I mean, I don't think anyone would be confused. And they can always change it if they want, so.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, okay, so then. Um, Chantel says to make that screen for the private, to go private.
Yeah, I'm gonna figure out what the wording is that I. Yeah, I'm gonna figure out what the wording is that I want it to be, unless we just want it to be after it's. Public for it to be a toggle. I was thinking it would have to be like an extra button, kinda like the make your group discoverable, but it would say make your group private. And instead of submit for approval, say hide.
Well, I think it should be the same menu option here. Will you to another screen like it does right now? Things, submit, and maybe it does say submit for approval. But the reason being, if it's a toggle, you could cheat the system, you could. Um, create your group. And then hit submit for approval, then go back and then toggle it to private, and then you'd have a toggle from now on. So you can't be a toggle, it can never be a toggle, it has to be. Another menu item. Because the toggle implies now, I could, let's, let's say I got approved, yeah, if I got approved. With two people, then I go change it up dramatically. You know, change the name, change everything. And, you know, like, it could be. You could gain the system. Which I still. Possibilities on that either way, but. We'll cross our bridge. So anyway, yeah, let's just keep it like this, where you, now, so when you come here, it'll. It'll say that, uh. It'll be like another confirmation to turn it to no longer have it visible.
Okay.
And I think if they go public again on it, it needs to be submitted for approval.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, cool. So we'll go with that and modify it along the way if we see. Not necessary. Okay, anybody have questions on that? Any questions anywhere? All right, well then, um. Probably a good place to stop. And, um. Are we do, are we doing a build later today? Did we discuss? That. I think, uh. I mean, any testing?
I don't think we, we're gonna do a build today, because we did one Friday, still we didn't test it.
I didn't see a build Friday, what number is it?
It was like, um, I said messaging slack, it was. Yeah, it's like, um.
Actually, I think we submitted it to the App Store, I'll check with Danny. Okay, um. That's the one that fixes the notification. There was a notification issue, right?
That's backend, I guess, so.
Okay, okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll take a look at that, I think it's actually in review, so, okay, then we'll, um, we'll catch up later and, um. Drop from here, so. All right, thanks guys.
Yeah, well, I'm, I think I merged it, right? All right, yeah, then, uh, give it like two minutes.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Simon. And what would I be testing, Jerry, with that, what merge?
Uh, it's my lobby was breaking.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, let me know if you need me to help test on that. Okay, all right, thanks guys, take it easy.